As the song says.
Test, test, one, two, three.
Good evening and welcome to this, the meeting in the Livermore City Council for April 24th. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Variantos.
Present.
Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Here.
Mayor Marchand.
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have several proclamations and presentations tonight. First is the presentation of the 2023 Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest Awards. And there we are. So something that's, of course, near and dear to my heart, having spent decades in water science.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for your patience, as well as to our community, as we're looking for the presentation file.
It's the great thing about technology.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience on that.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Natalie Crook, and I am your Water Resources Communications Representative. Tonight, we are presenting awards to the finalists in this year's Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest, which is sponsored by the City of Livermore, Zone 7 Water Agency, and California Water Service. Before starting our award presentation, I will provide you all with an overview of the contest's history and details on this year's competition. All right. So the annual Livermore Water Conservation Art Contest began in the early 1990s as a joint effort between the City of Livermore and Cal Water. Zone 7 joined as a co-sponsor for this contest in 2021. For over 30 years, this contest has challenged students to create artwork focused around saving water or understanding the importance of water in our daily lives. This year, the sponsoring agencies chose the theme "California Water: Back to Its Roots" to allow students to learn more about the beauty and water-saving power of California native plants. To help inspire their artwork, staff from Zone 7 Water Agency created a special educational webpage where students could learn more about local plant species. This competition was open to all K to 12th grade students who are Livermore residents or attend a Livermore school. Students could submit any type of visual artwork into the competition, including paintings, drawings, and digital illustration. This year, we received 56 entries from students at 13 schools and across 12 grade levels. After our staff narrowed down the entries to 10 finalists, the Livermore community had the opportunity to vote for our grand prize winner through an online ballot promoted through social media, Livermore schools, and local art organizations. Over a two-week period, we received a record 2,156 votes from the community. Tonight, we are presenting awards to this year's finalists and our grand prize winner. At this time, I would like to welcome our award presenters to the front of the room. Tonight, our contest finalists will receive their prizes from Mayor Marchand, Zone 7 Water Agency President Sarah Palmer, and Cal Water District Manager John Freeman. So I'll have you three come to the front of the room now. Thank you. All right, students, when you see your artwork on the screen, please come to the front of the room to receive your prizes and pose for a few pictures. After that, you can take a seat in the audience again. All right, so it looks like you have all the gift cards. All right, so I think we can get started. So our first contest finalist tonight is Lauren Slivermore Elementary School 1st Grader Serena Metta. Serena's artwork is called "Conserve Water: Plant California Natives." She used vibrant colors to highlight plants that are native to our region and therefore can thrive with little water. Congratulations, Serena. Our next artist is our Savior Lutheran School 3rd Grader Ella Eaton. Is Ella here tonight? Oh, there she is. Ella's artwork is called "Native Plants in Livermore at Sunset." She used watercolors, crayons, and markers to create a beautiful illustration of California plants. Ella hopes that people in Livermore will plant natives around their homes and businesses to help our community save water, since they are all naturally drought-resistant. Congratulations, Ella. Our next artist is Neil Waishaparam, a 5th grader from Rancho Las Bacitas Elementary School. Neil created a native plant diagram featuring poppies, oaks, and native grasses. He hopes his artwork inspires you to save water by going back to our native California plant roots. Congratulations, Neil. Our next artist was unable to make it tonight, but we still want to give her special recognition. This drawing was created by Anna Devon, a 6th grader at Junction Avenue. Her colored pencil illustration features five varieties of native plants that are not only beautiful, but they are an effective and easy way to save water. Congratulations, Anna. I know, it's almost like a botanical scientific illustration. I like it. All right, so is Joanna here tonight? Oh, so I guess Joanna's not here today, but she is a 7th grader at Junction Avenue K-8 School, and she created this artwork called "Poppies in the Valley." She wrote that she chose to paint poppies because their very beautiful flowers provide medicinal benefits and are California state flower. Congratulations, Joanna. All right. This digital illustration is called "Beautifying California" and was created by Mendenhall Middle School 8th grader Si Ganathree Pentagona. Si drew dry dirt around California to signify drought. However, the native plants on top of California represent the fact that these species thrive in our dry climate. Congratulations, Si. Our next contest finalist is Mendenhall Middle School 8th grader Gwenneth Gozum. Gwenneth painted a variety of California native flowers that are thriving as they withstand the droughts that California commonly experiences. Congratulations, Gwenneth. All right, is Talia here today? There she is. This artwork is called "Poppy Sin a Droppy," which is my favorite title tonight, and was created by Talia McKenzie, a Livermore homeschooled 8th grader. The droplet is reflecting a scene of California native plants in front of our planet. This shows the vital importance of even the smallest amount of water for the whole world. Congratulations, Talia. Livermore High School freshman Cole Gable painted this hummingbird and native plants as part of the Conversation Pieces Collaborative Youth Art Project. This project highlights native plants and animals that are found in our region. Congratulations, Cole. And last but not least, we would like to recognize this year's grand prize winner, Anna Prani Amarth. Anna Prani's artwork is called "California Pride: Golden Poppies." She wrote that the roots symbolize the history of California and the importance of nature in preserving a healthy environment in our future. The state of California is in the background to show that the poppy is our state flower. Congratulations.
You folks did amazingly. I'm so impressed. Your artwork, your sense of place is well, of course, the fact that, you know, water, that's right up there.
Thank you. Thank you to the Livermore School District for promoting this and all the other homeschoolers that participated. You guys did a great job. We're very happy to be part of this state with you guys. Congratulations.
All right. Along with the prizes the students receive during this presentation, their artwork will be displayed in the Livermore Chamber of Commerce Windows downtown throughout the month of May in celebration of Drinking Water Awareness Month. Congratulations to all this year's finalists. This concludes this presentation. Thank you.
This sort of awareness is very important, so it, and the artwork is remarkable. So thank you all, everyone that participated. This is, this is delightful. Thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to a proclamation recognizing May 2023 as Community Service Recognition Month in the city of Livermore. So Judy Erlinson is here. So this is particularly important because this coming May 6th, Saturday, is Community Service Day here in Livermore. This was a tradition that we started a number of years ago, and because of the global pandemic, it had a hiatus for a few years, and I'm very proud to have this back. The last time that we had this was, we met at Carnegie Park, and there were over 1,000 volunteers that were giving their time back to this community. So this year, we have, I hope that we can beat that record. I think last time we had over 50 projects around the city, parks, schools, and throughout the community. So looking forward to that. It's going to start at 8 o'clock. We meet at Carnegie Library Park, right in the middle of our downtown, and from 8, it starts out with a light breakfast. I think probably bananas and bagels like we had last time. Everybody gets a t-shirt, so sign up on the city website to log into a project, and please participate. It's a lot of fun. And then afterward, we all go back, and there's going to be a barbecue. So come on back, start with breakfast, finish with a barbecue, and just a really good feeling about having helped out the city. So with that, Community Service Recognition Month, May 2023. Whereas Community Service Recognition Month highlights the significant benefits that volunteers provide in our community, as well as the impact of their contribution towards those in need, volunteers gain a greater understanding of how their actions affect the well-being of the public and often find that the giving of themselves results in a feeling of greater sense of purpose and social connectivity. And whereas Livermore has a strong tradition of community service and volunteerism, over the past 10 years, the city of Livermore benefited from the efforts of thousands of volunteers, both individuals and from different organizations. And whereas these volunteers assist with city programs and completed over 190 projects throughout the city, working together to make Livermore a better place for all. Livermore's volunteers are the true heart and soul of our community. And whereas May 6th, 2023, is Community Service Day, where the city will be partnering with various community organizations to coordinate projects around Livermore, such as maintenance projects at Livermore schools and local nonprofits. And whereas the city will sponsor a fair to provide future volunteer outreach opportunities for over 20 nonprofit groups, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore thanks all of the hard-working volunteers and encourages residents of Livermore to volunteer to help bring about a positive change in the lives of others and in our community. I know we're all beyond May 6th, so I hope to join all of you there. So Ms. Erlinson?
I just quickly wanted to mention all the staff from our partner agencies, including the school district, including LARPD, who've all worked very hard to make this event a reality. And I also want to mention that there are other opportunities that we've included on LARPD's registration website that occur on several days or other days other than May 6th, in case folks can't make it that day. So I encourage everyone to register and check out the projects that are available.
Great. Thank you so much. And I think that Living Arroyos has a project coming up on May 13th, the following Saturday. So great. Well, thank you so much. Then we have the proclamation declaring April 23rd and 29th as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And we have Lindsay Reynolds, Senior Victim and Witness Advocate for Alameda County here. There you are. Thank you. So National Crime Victims Week is a proclamation from the city of Livermore, whereas the Alameda County Victim Witness Division is dedicated to ensuring the rights of crime victims and their families by providing services to aid in their recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime as they reclaim their sense of safety, well-being, and dignity. The Victim Witness Division staff assists victims of crime without regard to a person's race, gender, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, and gender identity or immigration status. And whereas established in 1974, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Program was the first such program, beginning with one victim advocate. Today, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office employs more than 60 individuals dedicated to working with victims of crime and has been bridging the gap between law enforcement and the community, building the community's trust in the criminal justice system. And whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime Act to provide a permanent source of funding for crime victim services and compensation, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Division partners with survivors, community service providers, criminal justice professionals, and victim advocates who work together to enhance a criminal justice system response that is accessible, culturally competent, and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims April 23rd to the 29th, 2023, National Crime Victims Rights Week, and thanks the Alameda County Victim Witness Division for their support to the Livermore community. Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, and the city council on behalf of my colleagues in the Victim Witness Advocate Program at the DA's office. We do our best to help our victims and our survivors get through those really hard times in navigating the court system, and it's with great city and county assistance that we can make that happen. So we are very thankful and very pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of our unit. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the great work that you do. All right, now we have the proclamation declaring April 2023 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. And this will be presented to Angie and Cola, Visual Arts and Education Manager for Livermore Valley Arts. Proclamation for the city of Livermore proclaiming Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Whereas this April is the 5th Annual Statewide Celebration of Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, which was first established by the California Legislature in 2019. And whereas the city of Livermore believes that arts, culture, and creativity are essential to creating a thriving community, and whereas appreciation for the arts inspires discovery, lifelong learning, and joy. And whereas culture creates connections, encourages understanding, and strengthens community. And whereas creativity sparks innovation, growth, and positive change. And whereas the city of Livermore values partnerships and the work of Alameda County Arts Council, local and state arts organizations, including California for the Arts and Create California. And whereas this collective work at a local level and throughout the state contributes to our quality of life, uplifts our community, and changes our lives for the better, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims April 2023 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, and encourages residents to join in in the celebration. And over the last, so 12 years, I guess, 10, 10, 12 years, the city of Livermore has added 57 new pieces of public art and acquired at no public expense. So I think that's a pretty remarkable statement about the impact and the promotion of the arts in our community. So with that, I'd like to present this to Angie and Cola.
I'll just take a short moment. I'm really thrilled to be here, especially following the Arts Awards to the young people. It's really key to the whole celebration of arts, culture, and creativity, that education can be furthered through the use of the arts. And that was really fun to watch all those kids get so involved and just very special. But we do very much appreciate the support that the city gives the cultural arts in Livermore, and we very much want that to continue and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And by the way, that was Beth Trutner, who's the president of the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. And I think at last count, we had 28 cultural arts organizations that were members of that. Pretty close. Okay, yeah, 28. So it just shows the impact of the arts in our community. So thank you all for the, for participating. Okay, with that, we go on to the open forum. I asked the city clerk to tell us how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely, as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those who wish to speak over Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment for tonight?
Yes, we do. First speaker is David McWigan, followed by Will Bolton, followed by Michael Galvin.
You're right, Johnny. I was jacked up by the Livermore police on a DUI. You got me. Now, the officer determined he needed to lie and manipulate the physical evidence to bring charges, but you got me. And I know it would be easier if people just stayed God. But the thing is, Johnny, when you lie against so many people, eventually someone is going to come along and say, "Not today, Johnny." And since you brought up going to trial, let's look at what that meant. The officer testified that he was otherwise occupied and didn't get to talking to me until 30 minutes into the investigation, taking my statement and culminating in the breathalyzer test some 20 minutes after that. What actually happened is the backup and fire department were on the site to take care of traffic and the pedestrian in about seven or eight minutes. The officer then began his conversations with me in close proximity over a sustained period of time, culminating in my signed statement in the officer's hands with him in his car while he's doing paperwork, and I was leaning against my vehicle at the 30-minute mark of the investigation. Some 20 minutes later, I was called over to do the breathalyzer, and the officer suddenly smelled alcohol. Now, you might say, some might say, there is a reasonable affirmative defense to be made of how much under the influence someone could be if the officer doesn't notice anything untoward while the conversation's on the event details and only notice alcohol after using an electronic device 20 or so minutes later. But to present that defense, I would first have to prove the officer is lying, a much higher bar. No, Johnny, you know there is no fair trial in public possible when you have to defend events that never actually happened. That's why you personally support the practice and personally lie to cover it up. The problem for you, Johnny, is that your lies aren't consistent. If you determine my complaint was unfounded, why didn't you just say so back in August 2019? Why did you willfully violate California Penal Code and withhold the determination? If my complaint was really unfounded, why didn't you just say so in November 2020? Why did you willfully continue to violate the California Penal Code by continually to withhold the determination? I'll admit, I only came up with one explanation. If you know you're going to lie about the determination, you might as well put off that lie as long as possible. You're a lying corrupt criminal, Johnny, and you will be found out.
The next speaker is Will Bolton, followed by Michael Galvin, followed by Carol Garberson.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and councilmembers. My name is Will Bolton, president of the Livermore Heritage Guild, a nonprofit, all-volunteer-run organization dedicated to preserving the history of Livermore and the surrounding area. This year, 2023, marks the 50th anniversary of the founding of the Heritage Guild. And over that period of time, we've put into practice our motto of saving yesterday for tomorrow through such activities as encouraging preservation of historic buildings, historic research, maintaining records, archives of historical records, and other similar activities. As part of our activities, it's our privilege to work with the city and manage the History Center at the Carnegie Building in downtown Livermore, the Agaman Ranch on Olivina Avenue, and the Duarte Garage at the corner of North L Street and Portola Avenue. Over this course of this year, the first part of this year, in celebration of the 50th anniversary, in addition to our usual open houses and public access, we've had a number of special public events. In the remainder of the year, we have additional public activities coming, coming up, including a tour of historic wine caves in the Livermore area, a progressive dinner to stop at each of the major facilities. A progressive dinner to stop at each of the major facilities that the Heritage Guild is involved in managing and a open reception at the Livermore Railroad Station. I brought schedules of these upcoming events and left copies for you with the city clerk. And in addition, you and other members of the community can visit our website at www.lhg.org to get an up to date schedule and more details on these activities. And I hope you will be able to join us and other members of the community in celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Livermore Heritage Guild. Thank you.
Mr. Bolton, congratulations. And I think it's particularly heartening that you were founded in order to save the train depot. And now the train depot has been moved back to the railroad tracks. And it's once again a train station. I think that's that's a great victory on the part of Livermore Heritage Guild. So thank you for all the great work that you're doing in the community. It's certainly appreciated. And if you could, you could give those to the city clerk, we'll get those. Thank you and congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Galvin, followed by Carol Garberson, followed by Trish Monroe.
Good evening. I'm Michael Galvin, the executive director of Community Resources for Independent Living. I'm here to reintroduce half ourselves after the pandemic and to thank you for the consistent financial support of the city and also the office space at the Livermore Multi-Service Center. I want you to know that we provide services to persons with disabilities, seniors with functional limitations. And we had to pivot with the pandemic. I want you to know, we didn't stop serving. We in fact, added nine services. So they would be, for example, we have a Chrome Connect program because one of the biggest gaps we discovered was in digital access. And so we give people free Chromebooks, computer training and Wi-Fi access. We also have a program called Chat. We work with County On, which provides iPads to people, again, without internet access. Voice options provides iPads with speech impediment apps so that you can have access to a telephone if you have a speech impediment. We also work with Google to get Google Nest and Home out to people who have dexterity or mobility challenges because then they can just simply speak what it is for the lights to go on or the television to turn on. We also have added a battery backup program. We work with PG&E on that to provide batteries to people who use durable medical equipment that's powered by electricity. Just to let you know, Livermore is part of that high risk area, which you all know if you live here, right? And also, we then added a new youth service program, a transition program to help people move from skilled nursing facilities to to community based living. Because as you know, COVID really showed us how dangerous sniffs unintentionally can be, you know. And then finally, we now also are part of the newly designated Aging and Disability Resource Connection in Alameda County, along with AAA, the Area Agency on Aging, and SIL, our sister ILC in Berkeley, to provide seamless services for persons with disabilities or seniors. In all of this, we still have continued all the services we did before. We just expanded more and more. And I just want to let you know that we're here at the Livermore Multi-Service Center, and we're very grateful for all the consistent support Livermore has given us. And I might say I missed the trailer.
You're the only one that does. And that raccoon trying to claw his way out of the paneling. Okay, well, thank you for all the great work that you do for our community. It's greatly appreciated.
Next speaker is Carol Garberson, followed by Trish Monroe.
Good evening. I'm a member of the Board of the Alameda County Resource Conservation District, and I'm just here tonight to tell you about a new project, which is very timely considering the art projects that were going on here about native plants. We are just starting a new program. We're actually in the process of looking for funding, but we're going to be working with other organizations throughout the Bay Area to encourage municipalities to really up the number of native plants that are used in landscaping. And it seems like this is really timely right now because of the flooding, the drought has caused a great deal of loss of trees and other landscaping. But we also have a lot of landscaping that is non-native, non-productive. Now, water is one important part, but a really big part is that we are losing butterflies, native bees and bird populations that are declining dramatically. We have less than 50% of some of them, some are in the edge of extinction. They're dropping about 2% in the population per year because of non-native plants as well as blanket spraying of pesticides and herbicides development. When we've got the climate change, a lot of things involved here, the drought. But we, if you don't have caterpillars, you don't have birds, you don't have butterflies. Caterpillars developed and evolved with native plants, and they're very specific. Just like monarchs can only eat milkweed, other butterflies, caterpillars are very specific on what they can eat. If you don't have the native plants for them, you don't have caterpillars. Birds feed their babies caterpillars. Just one nest of chickadees, one nest for the two weeks before the babies leave the nest, they will eat between 6,000 and 9,000 caterpillars because they're soft bodied and they're very high in nutrients. So if you don't have caterpillars, you don't have birds as well as not having butterflies. And I don't know, people of a certain age remember a lot of butterflies flying around. And how many people, how often do you see butterflies now? They are an important pollinator. Butterflies and moths both, and the caterpillar is extremely important. So we're trying to encourage municipalities to put in native plants, and it sounds like we're looking at that just for water. But if you have the native plants, you not only conserve water, but you cut down on labor, you cut down on maintenance costs because you don't have to be mowing and blowing and pruning things into little cubes and little balls. You let them grow naturally. The caterpillars will fall from the plants that they are on, whether it's trees or other types of plants, and most of them, like 90% of them, pupate in the soil or in the leaf litter underneath the trees. So that's a really important thing to include. So we're hoping that you will consider that with future landscaping and partner with us.
Thank you very much.
The final speaker is Trish Monroe.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and city staff. I'm Trish Monroe. I live at the eastern end of East Avenue. And once again, I'm here to talk about that. Oh, except before before that, I wanted to say I really appreciated Carol Garberson's comments on native plants. That was that was really, really informative. So thank you. So the last couple of weeks, we have seen East Avenue in action. And I've seen a lot of complaints about it. So over the weekend, my husband and I wandered out, well, he drove. I took notes on every single intersection at East Avenue to see precisely what all those complaints were about, because my experience is just basically driving down East Avenue. And what I found was that there wasn't a problem that we could find. He said that he had to pay a little more attention, which, you know, is not a bad thing to do when you're driving. When we turned right on the various streets, both onto Hillcrest, onto Estates and so on, he had to slow down, but you know, that's probably a good thing to do when you're driving. It wasn't a problem getting near the bollards. Turning left or turning right off of those side streets, actually, he said was easier. And the reason for that is that you actually can pull out a little bit and where you might have had cars in the past, you now have more actual visibility. So it was an improvement. The one place that I would actually ask just for clarification is where Dolores comes into East Avenue. It's actually not clear what you're supposed to do with the limit line. So having some signage around that would be nice. Now, I could have put all of that in a memo to city staff, but I actually think it's a good thing to have on the record, particularly since people seem to really not like change. And it's just, you know, it's just pay attention. It's not that bad. In fact, it's better. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been in my experience that people love progress, but they hate change. So thank you for your comments.
There are no additional speakers.
Okay, going to close the open forum then. And now we move on to the consent calendar. These are typically routine items and are acted on usually with a single action. Are there any items that the council would like to pull for comment? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Public comment for item 5.10. Our first speaker is Marty Sutton, followed by Christine Dillman, followed by Liz Perez Howe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff and residents. As many of you know, I am a supporter of many of our community nonprofits. Tonight, I am representing, not representing any organization, but I am here as a resident in support of our service providers. First, I want to thank our city staff for working to find funds to supplement the now deficient SOE funds that so many of our providers receive that are necessary to help support our residents. Without the hard work of city staff, several of our service providers would be short on funding. Secondly, I would like all of us to start talking about viewing our service providers as an integral part of public safety, just like our police and fire departments. From my understanding, when Livermore residents are polled about their top priorities for the city, the number one answer is public safety. When most of us think of public safety, we think of the incredible police and fire departments. But what about our service providers? They provide hot meals to our most vulnerable residents, healthcare to those that don't have private insurance, support to our disabled community, mental health services to victims of domestic violence, housing assistance to those experiencing homelessness or families on the verge of experiencing homelessness, services and meals to our growing senior population, assistance to our unhoused population, including our veterans, and so many other critical services to our residents in need. During COVID, many of our providers ramped up services to expand and serve more clients. Federal and state COVID funds are going in, going away, yet the client base for many of our providers is still growing. I think there's a thought that if we fund our service providers X number of years with Y number of dollars, we will have solid poverty and then we can move on. But our service providers are a critical part of our foundation to not only help people climb out of poverty, but also to keep people out of the cycle of poverty. We wouldn't say let's fund the fire department for the next five years and hope we don't have any more fires after that. Until there are drastic changes at the federal and state level, our local service providers are needed in our community. They are essential services, just like police and fire. I believe we should start making them a priority as part of public safety. How? One, give them contracts for more than one year. Second, find more stable funding for them. And lastly, continue to support our providers to find new and innovative ways to support our residents. Because I know when our most vulnerable residents feel safe and secure, the rest of us will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christine Dillman, followed by Liz Perez Howe.
Hello, my name is Christine Dillman, and I'm the executive director of Tri Valley Haven. I really just wanted to come here to thank you all. I greatly appreciate the city of Livermore staff, the Human Services Council, you, the city council, the mayor, the vice mayor, for your ongoing support of Tri Valley Haven and survivors and families in need. For over 40 years, Tri Valley Haven has successfully been providing confidential, safe mental health counseling, case management, restraining order assistance and community education to tri valley individuals and families fleeing domestic violence. In addition, Tri Valley Haven has been providing free groceries to local households in economic need for over 20 years. Last year, with your assistance, we opened the first client choice food pantry in the Tri Valley that serves approximately 200 residents every day. Currently, Tri Valley Haven runs the only confidential domestic violence shelter and the only domestic violence and homeless shelters that accept boys 11 years of age and older as part of families. With your help and support, Tri Valley Haven is building its new domestic violence safety shelter that unfortunately is falling apart after 40 years of successfully housing survivors and expanding its capacity to 45 beds up from 30. The new shelter will help 50% more residents in need so that we can provide assistance and the new shelter will have dedicated play areas. Therapy group and quiet rooms will also be added. While the rebuild is taking place, Tri Valley Haven will continue to house 30 domestic violence survivors off-site, providing shelter, food and all the services Tri Valley Haven offers, including case management, counseling, life skill classes and advocacy. I have worked at Tri Valley Haven for over 20 years and I stay because we are a mission led organization. I get to see every day the difference we are making, but we do not do this alone. Your funding is vital and essential. You as city council members, you don't always get to see the results of your funding. The other day I was out shopping and I saw a woman who had been at our domestic violence and homeless shelter years before. She came in fleeing abuse when her children were nine and five years of age. Today, she is a manager at a local retail store and both of those kids have graduated college. So your funding makes a difference. You make a difference. And thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Dillman.
The final speaker is Liz Perez Howe.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I too am here to express my gratitude. I'm Liz Perez Howe. I'm the CEO of Access Community Health. And I have the honor of leading this organization after stepping into the role last June. I served as COO for nine years prior to that. And I wanted to express my support, my appreciation for the support for the triage nurse application that we submitted as well as for Access Community Health overall. As you know, Access is the only nonprofit community health organization in the Tri Valley. And we serve a wide range of medical, dental, behavioral health and supportive services for our underserved population of the Tri Valley. We just celebrated our 51st anniversary and we're so proud to be able to be here to meet the needs of our community. We requested grant funding for this position as it is such a critical role within our medical care team and one that is wholly subsidized by Access as it is not reimbursable through the Medi-Cal Health Plan. The triage nurse is located within our call center and serves as a resource for patients. When a patient is experiencing symptoms of any nature, they can call our triage nurse and receive the care that they need in the language that they need. Depending on the severity, the nurse advises the patient on the next step, scheduling an appointment with a provider, home care, or if severe enough, directing them to the ER. We receive over 10,000 calls each year. 40% of those are from residents that live in Livermore. And there are all sorts of calls from new moms calling about their infant, infant systems, symptoms to our geriatric population needing advice on next steps. The triage nurse is also central to reducing healthcare costs as a whole. By linking patients to care early, we can educate our patients and help them prevent escalation. And we can also provide additional support to prevent unnecessary trips to the emergency rooms. So it's a critical position. It's unreimbursable. And we're so grateful for that support in order to be able to continue to provide this service. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no additional speakers.
Okay, okay. Please.
I appreciate you coming out and and speaking about this specifically. I don't have our exact number in my head, but our city budget is far more than $1,100,000. It's a drop in the bucket of the services that we provide in the city, but they are inextricably linked to everything else. Preventing health from getting worse with a triage nurse prevents a 911 call that our fire department comes out to. So So I can wait till matters for this, but I would like some more information on our one-year contract. I just know generally, working with organizations in my day job that are working to solve all of these social determinants of health are constantly applying for funds, and a year is really not that long of a time in the big scope of things. So if I could get a memo or information on what the reasoning behind our one-year contracts are and what we could maybe do to make things a little bit easier for people that are seriously pinching pennies, because I think there's a myth that a nonprofit doesn't need money because they don't pay taxes. But it's really disappointing to me that a vast majority of nonprofit service providers are eligible for benefits because their wages are so low and all these other things are happening. So I hear you. I'm sorry that I don't have the ability to just say, sure, give 50% of our budget to this. That would be great. But thank you for coming to tell your story on the record, because I think people forget that all of that goes into it. So thank you for what you do.
Any comments? Okay, just a couple of quick questions, if I may, on the, or did you have a comment for the Vice Mayor's comment?
Thank you, Mayor. This is your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. We can certainly circulate a memo in response to your questions, but I think a simple response is we're dealing with an annual funding that comes from the federal government, and the Human Services Commission considers that funding on an annual basis. But we could certainly provide additional level of detail in a memo.
I just have a few questions on the consent calendar. On 5.7, the Raymond Road model aircraft lease, does the fee cover the inspection costs for the city? Since obviously we would probably have to go out there and make sure that nobody's building anything that's a couple stories.
Mr. Mayor, this is Paul Spencer, Director of Community Development, and yes, that fee does cover the cost of annual inspections, and the lease agreement requires that they make any repairs that are identified to keep the facility in working order.
Okay, great, thank you. And on 5.8, the odor control on the trash collection station, the one that we have next to Wing and Bakery has had some problems. Are we looking into odor control on the new trash enclosure?
We will have an improved facility. The one next to Wing and Bakery has an open roof and really no odor control to speak of. The new facility will be fully enclosed, will have a roof with a fan system, and will be fully enclosed. So we expect that to make a big difference.
Very good, thank you. And finally, on 5.6, that's the contract with Pangaea Environmental. I just had to make a comment on this, that we just had Earth Day, and we just celebrated the responsibility for our planet. And this deals with several toxic waste sites, and I think it's notable to recognize that there were ads taken out in The Independent, and there was a representative from our local Sierra Club that suggested just leaving this contamination behind. And that's not what responsible governments do. With Livermore Plaza, I believe it was 2,000 tons of earth that was moved, contaminated soil that was taken out of that. Stockman Park, over 1,800 tons of contaminated soil were removed. And so this is what responsible governments do, is they mitigate these sites and they clean up the contamination. This was, of course, PCE, tetrachlorethylene. But there was a tremendous amount of misinformation, and I just wanted to quote a couple of things from the staff report. This is regarding the old train depot site. And this is working with the presenting the guidelines for appropriate health and safety precautions for onsite workers, provides protocols for management of the site soil and groundwater disturbed during construction, and establishes post-construction testing and reporting procedures to verify that the site meets water board requirements. And despite what was reported, the staff report clearly states the site management plan was approved by the Water Board in 2022. And that's very important. This is, we've done this many, many times. We've worked with contaminated sites, and we ensure that the site has been properly mitigated and the hazards have been abated. And that's what responsible governments do. And the report, as I'll continue with the comments here, the report contains a health risk assessment that demonstrates that there is no significant vapor intrusion risk for existing or future occupants on the Blacksmith Square parcels. These documents were also approved by the Water Board in 2023. And finally, the Department of Toxic Substance Control has approved two years of funding for remediation activities at the L Street Garage Site and the old train depot, which is the site for Eden Housing site, is also included in that. And based on the current schedule, a little over half of the work covered under this agreement will be conducted in the next two years and is eligible for grant reimbursements, 2022 COP debt construction fund 320, and these will fund remaining expenses for these tasks and all expenses. So these are also reimbursable and covered by grants. So this is what responsible governments do. We don't leave the contamination behind. We clean it up, and I applaud the staff working with the regional board and the regional board approving all of the plans we've put together. So thank you for the great work that you're continuing to do on this site and all of the other multiple contaminated sites that we've had downtown and throughout the city.
Thank you. Appreciate your support and the council's support.
Well, thank you. So at that, is there a motion?
I'll move consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos?
Aye.
Councilmember Branning?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kik?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye. Onto public hearings. We have a hearing to consider a resolution approving the first substantial amendment to the City of Livermore's U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Agreement 2022-23 Action Plan.
Honorable Mayor Marchand and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Amy Walker, Management Analyst in the Community Development Department. Ms. Walker?
Good evening, Mayor, council and public. My name is Amy Walker, and I'm the Human Service Management Analyst for the Housing and Human Services Division. The item before you tonight is a public hearing for the first substantial amendment to the city's HUD-approved fiscal year 2223 action plan. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we also refer to as HUD, requires that all state, county, and local governments receiving community development block grants complete an annual action plan that identifies federal, state, and local funding resources that the city will utilize to meet the priorities established in its five-year consolidated plan, which covers fiscal years 2020 through 2024. The City of Livermore is an entitlement recipient for CDBG funds. Therefore, we are required to prepare this annual action plan. As an entitlement recipient, the city is also required to have a citizen participation plan. The participation plan describes policies, procedures, and public involvement for the grant process. The plan also describes the criteria that would require a substantial amendment to the action plan. A substantial amendment is required when the city's activities, purpose, scope, location, or beneficiaries are substantially changed. A city council approved the fiscal year 2223 action plan on April 25, 2022 for the amount of $383,624 for various projects such as tenant-based rental assistance programs, acquisition of a new service site for Access Community Health, Meals on Wheels, senior meal programs, and payments on our Section 108 loans. Staff is requesting three substantial changes to this approved fiscal year 2223 action plan as follows. The first change is reassigning leftover capital entitlement funds from fiscal year 1617 and 1718 to fiscal year 2223's programs. CDBG entitlement funds expire after seven years. It expires seven years after HUD allocates the money to the city. Staff has been going through a thorough review of the city's CDBG funds, ensuring that the city remains in compliance for timeliness with HUD. With the review of funds, it was discovered that the city has $88,592 of fiscal year 1617 and $16,441 of 1718 capital funds that are set to expire September 30, 2023 and '24. These funds were leftover funds from programs such as a rehab program, tenant-based rental assistance, and Section 108 loan payments that did not utilize all of their entitlement during that year. Staff is proposing to reallocate the $105,033 of these unspent funds to current projects to ensure that the city does not lose this funding. The capital projects that the funds will be applied to in fiscal year 2223 are payments on our Section 108 principal and interest loan and our tenant-based rental assistance program. The city will then reallocate the unused 2223 funds to a future capital project. The second change to the annual action plan is to allocate an additional $15,214 of prior year unspent CDBG capital funds to Tri Valley Haven's tenant-based rental assistance program. Tri Valley Haven's tenant-based rental assistance program uses CDBG capital funding to pay for a housing coordinator. In fiscal year 2122, Tri Valley Haven had a vacancy in their housing coordinator position that left $15,214 unspent. Tri Valley Haven is requesting the unspent money be carried forward to the current year in order to help pay for additional staffing costs and training for their program. The final change to the annual action plan is to remove $64,610 of allocated CDBG funding from Access Community Health's new service site project. Access Community Health submitted a project application to fund acquisition for a new dental and health service site at 1686 Second Street in Livermore. The approved grant funding of $184,310 included $64,610 of CDBG funds and $119,700 of human service facility fee funds. It was later determined, due to some of HUD's procedural requirements, that CDBG funding was ineligible to be used on this project. Staff is recommending city council approve the removal of CDBG funds from this project and supplant those funds with an additional $64,610 of human service facility fee funds. The supplemental appropriation of the human service facility fee funds will ensure that the project receives the original awarded amount approved by city council in April of 2022. The city will then reallocate those unused funds to a future capital project. So in summary, staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution approving the first substantial amendment to the City of Livermore's HUD-approved fiscal year 2223 annual action plan. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute related documents and agreements and modifications to HUD and to sub-grantees Tri Valley Haven and Access Community Health, and approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $64,610 from the human service facility fee fund in fiscal year 2223. And that concludes my presentation on this item.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No comment has been received.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so being there, there is no public comment. I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council, council discussion.
Thanks for the report. I, one thing, I guess I'm disappointed in that we had leftover money for six or seven years. And I'm pretty sure that from this same dais in the old building, I was trying to encourage us to spend the money that we have. I mean, we have plenty of people in need out there. And having money sitting in our kind of bank accounts for six or seven years seems almost inexcusable. And I mean, the explanation for spending it now is because it's going to expire and we have to send it back. You know, I think we need to really consider how to spend the money when we get it to help those people in most in need. And I certainly approve, agree with the presentation and the recommendations, but I guess I'd like you to make sure that in the future we spend the money as we get it.
Thank you.
I was just noticing that this is just another shuffle of grabbing funds in here and there, and all of the funding for these kinds of resources are so piecemeal. My question is, has the issue been identified of why the funds were not spent before? And how can we better track funding year to year rather than seven years to seven years?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kik. Yes, we have. Sometimes when we allocate funds, for instance, the 2006 rehab project, it was 54,000. It was delayed and just didn't get off the ground. And so then sometimes we allocate funds to a project, and the scope of work may change, and it may not be allowable. So there is a whole lot of reasons that the Section 108, we overestimated what the payments were going to be. And so we're able to go back and use that funding towards the Section 108 one. So we have discovered it. We will absolutely be, you know, doing everything we can to spend down the funds as they come in, as Councilmember Carling suggested.
I was just thinking, just in general, there's so many things to keep track of. We've been doing a lot of work on our modernization. I'm assuming that some of these changes will prevent some of these, like, what honestly sometimes are Excel mistypes, because a lot of things are manual in the past. So I don't know if that's true, but I'm fingers crossed that the reason we're doing some of these big modernization improvements are to help with things like this. So I feel like we're going in the right direction. I appreciate you bringing this to me. And I agree that this is a good thing to do before that money expires.
Any other comments? I remember a couple of years ago, the state had allocated a couple of billion dollars for mental health, and it was unspent, and unspent for years, because there are requirements before you can get the money or before you can spend the money. So as hard as it is to believe, sometimes it's very difficult to spend money because there are so many other requirements and notification and certifying the different actions. There's a lot of strings attached. And so with my colleagues up here, yeah, it's, you wonder how it is that the money wasn't spent, but sometimes it's very difficult to spend that money. So I know that all of you are doing a tremendous job against tremendous need. So I certainly appreciate your great efforts. So thank you very much for that. If there's no further comment, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kik.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Branning. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos?
Yes.
Councilmember Branning?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor K?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye. I'm moving on to 6.2. This is a hearing to consider the Community Development Block Grants, the CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Program's Annual Action Plan for fiscal 2324.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, this is your city manager once again. And item 6.2 is going to be presented by the same staff as item 6.1 by Ms. Walker and Mr. Thurman.
All right. Well, good evening again. My name's Amy Walker, and I'm the Human Service Management Analyst for the Housing and Human Services Division. The item before you tonight is a public hearing for the federal action plan for fiscal year 2324. I'm going to start by doing a brief overview of HUD's national objectives and goals, which are used to guide the city on what programs to fund using these federal dollars. HUD's three national objectives HUD's three national objectives for community development block grant um C D B G funds are the following. Benefiting low and moderate income persons, assisting in preventing and or eliminating slum and blight in meeting an urgent need that possesses an immediate threat to health and safety. All programs um funded with these C D B G uh block grant funds must meet at least one of these national objectives. HUD also has a set of priority needs and goals for this C D B G program. They are the following: creating an economic, um, creating economic opportunities, creating suitable living environments and providing decent affordable housing. The city must show that the programs funded with these C D B G funds are working towards meeting these goals as well. Um, HUD requires that all state, county and local governments receiving C D B G and home investment partnership funds complete an annual action plan that identifies federal, state and local funding resources. Um, as an entitlement city, we must make sure that the annual action plan identifies the city's goals, priorities and plans of implementation to serve Livermore's low-income residents. The city is also a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium and will receive an annual funding of home funds through the county. This is a separate process with the county but runs parallel with the C D B G process. Um, and I'll uh quickly walk through the action plan timeline for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, we started with the grant application workshop in December of two thousand twenty-two, and this was with um the tri- the other cities in the Tri Valley, so it's Pleasanton and Dublin. In January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three was the application deadline. Um, and we received twenty-one applications from fourteen agencies and they were requesting one um one point four million dollars in grant funding for twenty-three, twenty-four. At the February seventh, two thousand twenty-three Human Service Commission meeting, new applicants were asked to make presentations to the commission about their programs and all applicants answered any questions that the commissioners had for them. The Human Service Commission made their final grant recommendations on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And today we're here for a required public hearing and council approval for the action plan and grant recommendations. All right. So um on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, HUD released the allocation amounts for twenty-three, twenty-four's uh C D B G and home programs. The city's home allocation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is um a reduction of approximately two point eight percent from last year. And the C D B G allocation for twenty-three, twenty-four is four hundred and four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is an increase of five and a half percent um for this year. I mean, from last year. As mentioned in the last presentation, staff has been doing a thorough review of the C D B G funds to ensure that we're in compliance with timeliness with HUD. Because of that, the twenty-three, twenty-four action plan is proposing to allocate four hundred thousand dollars of prior year capital funding from C D B G to Tri Valley Haven's emergency shelter rebuild project for a total of eight hundred and four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars of C D B G funding in twenty-three, twenty-four. These um prior year capital funds. Um, yeah, so in order to use these federal funding for Tri Valley Haven's emergency shelter rebuild project, it requires the city to complete an environmental review on the project. Staff is requesting the authorization to enter into a joint uh memorandum of understanding or an M O U with the city of Pleasanton to help facilitate the environmental review process and share in the consulting costs associated with performing the review. Um, so tonight, Human Service Commission and staff are recommending that city council adopt a resolution approving the twenty-three, twenty-four annual action plan for home investment partnership and community development block grant programs and authorizing its submittal to Alameda County for inclusion with the Alameda County Home Consortium Report and submission to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to sign all related documents related to the action plan and authorizing the city manager to enter into an M O U with the city of Pleasanton to perform a joint environmental review for the Tri Valley Haven's emergency shelter rebuild project. And that concludes my presentation tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No comments have been received.
Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to close the public hearing since there is no comment. Bring it back to the council. Uh, any questions or discussion by the council? Uh, Councilmember Branning.
Uh, so first of all, thank you very much for this. Um, I really want to commend the Human Services Commission for the work they've done on this. Uh, I was on the Human Services Commission for quite some time. Uh, for those of you who don't know, the process that goes into getting here is represents probably hundreds of man-hours, if not getting up into the thousands. Uh, it is a really intense process that requires a great deal of review, a great deal of meeting with the different providers, a lot of work. Um, with that, I just really want to state my absolute gratitude for the hours and hours reviewing grants that the Human Service Commission does for the time uh reviewing the grants, meeting with the applicants, scoring the grants, allocating the funding and everything that the uh Human Services Department does along with these grants. And it's just awesome that we're able to really uh move this forward in an effective way. So, thank you. Uh, I also do have a matters initiated related to this later.
Sure. Councilperson Carling.
Thank you uh also for the report. I think it's interesting that, I think it's key that Christine Delman was here earlier talking about the need to rebuild Tri Valley Haven's emergency shelter. So I certainly applaud uh this recommendation this evening because it's clear that uh rebuild is necessary and I wasn't aware that actually they'd increased the number of beds by fifty percent. So I think that is key and certainly support the recommendation. So thank you.
I agree with what my fellow council members said. I just have a question. Um, I tried to look again, but I may have missed it. Why is the city of Pleasanton? Is it because we don't know where it is and we're why is the city of Pleasanton part- partnering with us on?
So, city of Pleasanton is also putting in federal funding um as well as
Okay, that makes sense.
Dublin. Um, but Dublin goes through the county, so the county has their own process that they go through. So the two cities would like to combine together for staff resources in order to do the review.
Perfect. That was my next question is where's Dublin? Um, so, all right.
So all three are planning on contributing to this project.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And again, uh, recognizing that there is a great deal more need. Uh, you have one point four million dollars in requests, uh, giving out eight hundred four thousand, so it's not quite double. But uh, um, as uh, Councilmember Branning pointed out, it's, it's a very difficult process. It really, it's, it's, you can't give them all the money they want, but when you give them enough to make a difference, and I think that's the real key here is making a difference. And all of these nonprofits are doing tremendous work in our community. And so thank you for uh for helping fund the work that they're doing. So great, great work. Thank you. Um, with that, um, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make uh a mo- a motion to approve staff for recommendation.
I'll second.
Uh, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Branning. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Okay, with that, uh, moving on to uh, um, let's see, six point two, we're now we're on to matters initiated. Um, so, and, and report outs. So we'll start with the Councilmember Branning.
Thank you. Uh, I don't believe I have anything to add to my report outs for this time. Um, it was actually a really busy couple of weeks. Uh, I do have a matters initiated related to the Human Services Grant uh applications and process. So currently, just to make sure that everyone understands before I do my uh matters. Currently, how the process works is the applicants, uh, as was stated, go to a workshop. They provide an application, the application's identical effectively with numbers changed for us and Pleasanton and similar for Dublin, although slightly different. Uh, each city then has their own process working through it. But the way Livermore works is the Human Services Commission, each member grades each individual grant. The grades are then taken back to staff. Um, staff then compiles the scores, ranks them, uh, assigns basically a hierarchy list and goes through with the grants to decide who gets funding. Uh, there's several issues with, in my opinion, there are several issues with the way this is done. Uh, I don't think it is the best services, the best way to serve our providers. And I think it causes some of the issues that were brought up um today. And so I would like to recommend a matters initiated uh where staff looks at the way the other cities grade their grants in the Tri Valley. Um, would that be a good scope? So, yeah, I'm seeing a nod. Um, so look at the way the other cities in the Tri Valley grade their applications. Uh, look at the option of bringing the grading in-house and the commission setting the grading criteria, the priorities, as well as being the oversight and uh review body for the grading. Um, and then to bring back a recommendation to council, uh, perhaps speaking with the commission as well on their recommendations and bring back a recommendation to council uh on what might be the most effective way to serve our providers and perhaps improve the process of grading grants. Does that somewhat complex matters initiated all make sense?
No, we got it uh through the mayor uh to council member Branning. Um, we would conduct a survey of probably Tri Valley cities. Some of them go through their counties and others uh have this process through their commissions. See how the ranking is done in those cities and bring the results of that survey back to the commission for their input and review and then uh bring that back to the city council. We can probably accomplish this in the next couple of months.
And I saw three nods, so.
Thank you. That's all. Oh, actually, one other quick question. Sorry. Um, just really quickly, do we have a native plant policy for our uh green spaces? And if you don't know the answer to that, can you come back with an answer?
Um, I do not think we have an answer right now, but we will get back to you with an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Carling.
Yes, thank you. I um, I think like um all of us up here, we're relatively busy over the last couple of weeks. I just want to point out a couple of things. Uh, one was um a town hall out of Croche on climate and environment. I think it was very well attended. It was a very, very nice evening for a change and uh very pleasant. There are food trucks out there. Coffee could be had and uh vendors uh selling vegetables and that kind of thing and a lot of activities for kids. So it was a very nice event out of Croche. Um, middle school, elementary and middle, I guess it's a K eight, right? K eight school out at um uh north of the freeway. So that was a very nice event on the nineteenth. Also on the nineteenth, uh, Councilmember Branning and I did advisory board interviews. And again, uh, lots of great candidates, uh, often tough to choose who to, who to select for limited positions. But again, uh, we applaud the people that applied and congratulate those uh that we selected. And um, this is going to be continuing. I mean, we'll have more advisory board opportunities for the public moving forward. So again, I encourage any of the public that's listening or get your friends and neighbors to apply for these advisory boards as they become available. And because it's a, it's a great way to get involved in the city and give back to the community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Just really quickly to echo on that, uh, it was an amazing pool of candidates. So if any of the ones who applied are listening, I'd recommend that they look at the commissions and apply again because it was, it was incredible talent this time and I look forward to future advisory body interviews. It was a lot of fun and great meeting everyone.
Councilmember Bariantos.
Well. Well, I really appreciate um the expo, the climate and environment expo. That was, I it was warm, nice day for it too. And uh, I hope we'll, it'll, you know, get bigger, better. And I was encouraging people that, you know, we're going to start small, but it, we hope that it'll increase more attendance. And I think what, three hundred people showed up around there through the day. I can't remember. That's what I figured it's on. The other thing is, I did go up to the mountain. Harrods Mountain, the windmills up there. And he actually does go inside one of the windmills and he showed how they get up there. It, it's a you had to almost break your neck to look up the top, but they have a, a hoist that they strap around themselves besides safety belt. And it takes off fifty pounds as they go up. And there are landings and one guy's, yeah, we, we go up there and have lunch once in a while because they don't want to come all the way back down. I don't know how many steps there were, but and the other thing, they didn't talk to us about it, but there's little boxes up there off the side. And I asked him, was it one of the boxes, there are cameras that will spot uh birds like a golden eagle. And if one is coming close to one of the windmills, it'll actually shut the windmill down. And one of the windmills is shut down and now because there's a nest there. So, um, then I did go to E V C E down in Oakland again. And there's a loan being sent out to one of our companies here in Livermore uh for the farm ability. They hope to be able to charge one hundred electric trucks in the future. So that's what they're preparing to do there. Um, and uh I enjoyed the little meeting we had, even though we didn't do too much into your government committee. And Evan was there, but I, I, I enjoyed meeting the people there. And uh, we had a good little discussion. Nothing really, we can't vote anything. I, we just talked, but it was good meeting the people there.
Right. Very great. Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Kick.
Um, I have some things for Marie to put on the record because I forgot to fill out the form and I'm so sorry. Um, on April fourteenth, I went to the East Avenue grand opening and that was nice. On the eighteenth, um, there was a fire J P A board meeting. Um, on the twenty-second, I mean, this isn't like an official thing, but I got compost, I compost day. Um, and it was super well organized. The line was almost all the way back up to Vasco. Um, and if you know where the building is, that's a really long line. Um, but it wasn't that staff wasn't prepared or slow or anything. It was just there were so many people and it was, it was like a, it was like being at Disneyland for dirt. Um, so they were friendly and nice and they had people on the road talking to people on their windows. So anyways, it was great. Uh, I appreciated it. Um, because I had extra dirt, I had a reason to plant a new herb garden. So, um, that was really nice. Uh, one thing that I do need to note is that April twelfth, there was um a Valley Link meeting that I was not able to attend because of the new Brown Act rules. Um, if a quorum is not present in person, then you may not attend online, even if you noticed your location. Um, and because that didn't happen, I was unable to attend online. I'm not going to drive my kids to Tracy after school. So, um, after some discussion with some members of L A F T A, it looks like I will be uh removed from that board at some point just because there is no opportunity for childcare um that makes sense or, or heading out to Tracy with, with my kids. So, um, just, just kind of a, kind of a bummer, but I, I did want to bring that up and um just note and appreciate that my list tends to be really short because my fellow council members pick up the weight for me because I do have small kids and a full-time job. And so just thank you and I appreciate you taking on the extra um and that I, I can do the, the, the little things that I can. So, um, thanks, everybody. And um, we will let you know when I am off once L A F T A makes the decision. So, that's all I had.
You had a matters initiated?
I did.
Didn't you say, or, or, or did you already get that covered?
Oh, well, it's a memo. It's, she said it's covered.
Okay, you got it. All right, great. Um, okay, some of the fun stuff. Uh, so on uh, April twelfth, I presented a certificate um to Heidi Rasmussen from uh Concanon Vineyards celebrating one hundred forty years uh continuous operation uh by Concanon. Uh, and uh, it was kind of cool. It was the next day. Uh, I presented a certificate of congratulations to Carl Winty uh representing the one hundred fortieth anniversary of Winty Vineyards. Uh, so truly, the California wine industry started here in uh, in Livermore with uh Concanon uh where eighty-five percent of California's Cabernet originated. Uh, where eighty-five percent of California's Cabernet originated, uh, and Winty, where that's eighty-five percent of. California's Chardonnay originated. And of course, Concanon being where Petit Syrah originated. So, uh, this is where it's all happening. So, one hundred and forty years of recognition. Uh, for the, uh, uh, their contributions to Livermore and to the Tri Valley. Uh, also, uh, uh, on the nineteenth of, uh, April, we celebrated the thirty-ninth. Citizens Police Academy graduation, uh, right here in this building. Uh, and I was reflecting on that and I think I've probably attended at least twenty-five of those. Uh, it's a great program, uh, and, uh, they become our best ambassadors where they represent the. Police Department and they also, uh, the, um, Alumni Association volunteers and you give hundreds of hours of volunteerism. Uh, back to our community.
John, was there something unique about this class?
Pardon me?
Was this class, was there something unique about it? Wasn't it all women?
No, I think there were some guys in there too.
It was? Yeah.
It was all women?
Yeah. Okay, there's a lot of women.
There were. Uh, and, and one of them was in the, no, she left. One of them was in the audience tonight. Uh, one of our, uh, staff members was there. Um, but, uh, uh, yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a very cool program. Uh, also, uh, we attended a, uh, Quest Science Center, a tour of the Zeiss Innovation Center in, uh, Dublin. It's, uh, some of the technology there is amazing, uh, optics. Uh, and on, uh, the twenty-first, uh. Councilmember Branding and I were at the Knights of Columbus Red, Blue and Gold Dinner. Uh, and this is remarkable because this, uh, recognizes the Tri Valley first responders and, uh. It included, uh, recognizing Livermore Police Officer Cody Cardena, uh, who, uh, was part of our, uh, K nine unit. And he was, uh, uh, his partner was Bragg, uh, and Bragg is retired now, but, uh. Uh, we recognized Cody Cardena and also, uh, Livermore Pleasant Fire Department firefighter, paramedic, uh, Andrew Dawson. So recognizing the great work that they do, uh, for our community. Uh, so with that, um, that's all I have. I already, I don't have any matters initiated. Uh. Okay, so in that case, anything from?
Have one more thing. Uh, our police department and the fire department, I think, went out. We have a, um, honorary. Patrolman captain, uh, a child on, um, in, in. A young, like, five or six-year-old is on the same team, uh, same league as my son. And that. The day he had a game, they, they had the police department out and the fire department out to, to celebrate a kid who is, um. Not having a great time, um, with his health right now. Um, but it was. Really cool to see everybody out there, uh, supporting him. So thanks to our police and fire department for going out and, uh, making that kid's day.
I would have mentioned that, but nobody told me.
I only knew because my son had baseball.
But that's okay, because there are great things that are being done throughout this community and I don't have to know all of it. Because I just know that a lot of great things are happening. Uh, so with that, uh, are there any, uh, uh. Further comments from, uh, council or staff? With that, um, at, uh, now, uh, eight, uh, thirty-four, meeting is adjourned.